Regular March meeting to session. If you would like to, uh, open it with a prayer, would you do the prayer?
Yes, sir, I will. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you now, Lord Jesus, to thank you for your meaning blessings, Lord. Oh, we just pray that you keep your hands upon us, Lord, as we make decisions that affect us and the citizens of this county, Lord. Oh, we thank you for our county, oh, we just be with us, guide us and protect us, in Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Praise the leaders to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everybody look to the agenda. Need any changes? If not, need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Approval of the minutes? Everybody looked over the minutes? Everything looks good? Need a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Financial report? Everybody looked over? Everything look to be in order, need a motion to approve the financial?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Alright. Go to appearances. Mr. Robert?
Yes, sir.
Is that you?
Yeah. Mr. Robert, you wanna kinda just tell them about road situation and Andy can kinda... We're gonna talk about the Jernigan Road, Andy. So, Mr. Robert, you wanna just kinda talk a little bit about it and then Andy can kinda go into detail on that.
Okay, so, the road that runs kinda through our property out there is, it's, uh... The address is eighty-eight Jernigan Road where we live, and the property's eighty Jernigan Road. And it's off of Grady Cobb. And the road comes off of Grady Cobb and then comes into our property on the driveway. That the county, you guys haven't maintained the driveway portion for how long?
Not since I've been here.
Several years, it looks like. The driveway portion is a pea gravel, you know, tube rut driveway that goes past our house, and another house that's on the property, and then out the other end of the property. So, what we're requesting to do is to close it at where the property lines are. One end, it comes in and there's nobody else back there, it runs through our, our property. So, that's what we're, that's what we're requesting.
So, it will still be open coming from Grady Cobb to pretty much that tree line kinda? There a tree line right there like?
There's a, actually it runs through a field, which is somebody else's field.
Right, and then it comes to a tree line.
That's county ro- county ro- road. And then, yes, there's a tree line at our property line, and that's kinda where we wanna close it on the one end, and then the other end comes down and comes around a corner at the corner there. That's where we'd like to close it on that end.
Y'all got, if you got some, can you get us all some drawings?
There's a map if you, if you're looking there.
Do you have, do you have the mark, Doug, where we're?
Yes, right there, let me get you a copy of it. Make sure we're on the right page, see if that's how you want it. So, somewhere, is it back up here or somewhere up in there?
So, yeah, that's right. So, here.
So, so you want to back over this one?
Yeah, over here and over here.
Alright, so basically...
Wait till, wait till.
So, so, so he's basically right here, but then, but then more so down here.
In the curve right there.
This end of the curve. So, this is Willie's property here. And then ours is all back on this side.
Who farms this right here?
That's our property.
That's your property?
Yes.
You own all of this?
Yeah, all, we own from here over to here.
Okay.
Are any other houses on this road?
No, sir, that's it. Just our, this is our house right here. And then, there's another house here which we're gonna eventually take this down and put another home right there. We're planning on building another house there. So, that's our plan. And, uh... So, instead of right there, it would come back to here.
So, it won't affect who farms there right there then?
That's our property, we farm it.
Oh, okay.
We're actually gonna plant pine trees here.
Okay.
And there's another field in the back, back here that we're gonna plant trees on as well.
Gotcha.
But none of this has been maintained, correct?
No, I know, no, no, just to that.
From here...
You wouldn't even know there's a dirt road, I ain't been back there in ten, twelve years probably.
Two big holes right here and here, along in here fills up with water. So, you really can't even, when it's wet, you can't drive through here. This is what we use right here to come into the property. And then, there's some water holes in here as well that I wanna fill in and maintain, uh, myself.
What, what would be, I mean, I'm just asking you a question, because like, like this road didn't go very much front until it hits dirt road there.
That's right, that's right.
Would you wanna close the whole dirt road here and just leave that one open?
Because this is Willie's driveway. See, Willie lives right here. Willie Wallace, he owns nine acres right here on the corner.
Okay.
He owns this nine acres.
So, does it, he don't go down it?
No, he doesn't, he doesn't, he comes down this way to his property. And actually, he, he, the reason why we wanna close it is because we have kids running through there on four-wheelers.
Yeah.
Pickups, and my grandson plays in.
That guy's name Wayne?
I can't remember.
What's his name, John, is it Johnson?
I don't know.
I don't think that's, that ain't it, I don't think it's...
Somebody told me it was a gentleman.
Gerald Martin, but I can't remember who owned it.
Somebody told me a gentleman from out of state owned that property.
Yeah, but he's from here originally, and I can't think of anybody. Keith would say his name, I'd remember, but I can't remember.
Can't think of it right now neither.
So, that's the, that's our plan.
So, what's, so what do we have to do? We have to advertise it or do it, what we have to do?
Uh, that's what we're gonna have to kinda just discuss, let y'all look at it. Uh, make sure we follow the right steps. I don't, I don't think we have to advertise that, do we, Andy?
I don't think you have to really, you may have to advertise it, Doug, 'cause I think you got to have a hearing on it.
I think you gotta put it in the paper.
Yeah, you gotta have a hearing.
Then, if everything's good, nobody shows where, then y'all can vote.
Yeah, y'all, y'all, y'all check that out, though, yeah.
I just wanna make sure we follow the steps, if y'all are good, we'll, we'll proceed.
Yeah, I mean, nobody else, I mean, I don't have a problem.
When I started, there was three houses in there, and they're still, the, the, the two old houses are still there. It was just, you couldn't be late through there for their flowers and things like that. And everybody said, hey, don't, nobody go down it, leave it alone, don't, don't mess with it, so we never messed with it.
I, I understand that there was a, a barn across the street. Actually, I think the barn is over there. So, right across from the house right here, there was a, there was a barn over here.
Yeah, then there's another house. You know, yours says right here, and there's another house.
There's a house right here with...
Right, and then there's a house right there.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Alright, so we need a motion to proceed with...
Steps to close.
Steps to close that, those roads from that tree line to that curve right there? Alright, it's marked on the map. Need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Well, they'll get, he'll go through the steps and we'll see what we gotta do, and I know we have to have a hearing, I think.
So, it, it may be able to be put on April, but it all depends on, you know, if we have to run it one week, two weeks, and then we have to have a public hearing. Um, I think we have to run it two weeks and then have a public hearing. So, it may not be the April, it may be the May, but we'll, we'll go ahead and start proceeding.
So, you, can you call me when you get ready?
Yes, sir.
I'll check it.
That's all right, you'll just be your authority.
That's right.
Thank you guys very much.
Sir.
Alright. We'll move on to old business. Commissioner packet in two minutes.
So, y'all were gonna discuss that, uh, at this meeting, that how, how y'all wanted to proceed with, with doing that.
Right. So, that's where we had talked about opening up the packet that we get?
Yes, sir.
To everyone?
To put it on in the minutes, like, when I posted minutes online, it would be pretty much part of that, the, the minute packet. Uh, minus out like, uh, personnel or, or, you know, personal data and stuff like that. It would be just like clothes or, just basically the packet that you get is, is what would be put in there.
So, it would go in after, after the fact, you talking about?
Yeah, it, it would go in with the minutes, the minutes and I have. It would just be part of the minute record.
Is it already, is it open request now, is that what it is?
Yeah, all of it's, all of it's open record request. But like I say, if it's, if it's got any kinda personal data in there, we would have to, to redact that.
I would say keep it like it is, but that's just me. Anybody got any feelings on it?
I guess, I, the reason I'm saying that I brought it up is to have our commissioner board not saying it hasn't been, but add another layer of transparency to it where everybody can see, 'cause I... Next, I've been just elected on, so I remember how it was out there. And I've always wondered how y'all made decisions so quickly.
Right.
And if it's open record requestable, it's, it's nothing that can be hidden. So, that might build more, uh, of a better relationship with our constituents, them seeing what we're doing to make the decisions we make.
Right, but it is open request, I mean, they can't...
If thing's open record requestable now.
I guess they just make a request, yeah.
They, I mean, they can do it, but then, I'm, I'm saying, why not us take the steps? I believe, Doug, you said some counties do it already.
Yeah, some do, some don't, it depends on what, what the board wants.
I need a motion to either adopt it or not adopt it.
Can I make the motion to adopt it, to put it on the, that has come from the chairman?
No, you can make the motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to adopt that we start putting our packet onto our minutes.
Alright, and I need a second.
I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but it, how much, is that gonna be a whole lot more on you guys?
Oh, absolutely, 'cause they'll have to go through it and...
Yeah, it all depends on what, like I say, if what's in there, I mean, I, I could just, I could just black it out, this personal data. But as of right now, I'll scan it in anyway, so, I mean, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't matter.
It's already open request, so...
Right, that's, that's my thing, it's already open request, but...
It's just gonna put more work on them to have to go through it and read through it and... If anybody wants it, they can get it already, so... Alright. If I don't get a second, I can't go forward.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, so I didn't get a second, so we just, we'll keep it like it is. Alright, tire reverse reimbursement for Bushdare Road?
Oh, I, I went out there and if, if, in the packet, you see the tire, the marks where Andy had already fixed the road. Um, and, and there is no pothole in the drivable area of the road. Um, these, these, all the markings that we have on the side of the road will force the white line out to the shoulder. So, um, I know Decatur County, they, they will not, the only way they'll pay for a tire, I think Jeff correct me on this, is, is if it's been reported. So, if, if, if it's reported and you don't fix it, then, then with, and you damage a tire, then it'll be fixed, they'll pay for it. Um, I think, uh, Mr. Keith did, Seminole tell you that they won't pay for one?
That's correct, they...
So, I mean, we have never paid for, for tires that I'm aware of or any kinda damages. I kinda think we should probably kinda match what they do. If, you know, if it's been reported, then I can understand paying for it, but if it's, if it's something like, just brought to us like this, then we'd set a precedence if we start now.
So, we just wanna keep it like it is?
That's what I would do, yes, but that's, that's up to y'all.
So, we don't need to do anything then, take no action?
Um, well, you've got to decide whether you wanna pay or not, if you don't wanna, if you don't want to, you just made a motion not to pay.
Can I get a motion? Not to pay.
Not to pay.
Not to pay.
That's right.
I need a motion.
Yeah.
Second? Anyone?
I can't hear what's going on.
We got a motion not to pay. We need a second.
Okay, second.
All in favor? New business is the West tail maintenance contract.
Alright, West tail is our nine-one-one phone provider. Um, I got a call about three weeks ago from John Clayton, who does their accounting, and he said that they have since, since we joined with them, they have split ways with who provide their CAD. 'Cause when we got the phone, they were also in, they were in a group with Resilient or Easy nine-one-one. But they, since Easy nine-one-one has sold to Resilient, West tail has parted ways. And they told me they were having issues getting the payment that we give Easy nine-one-one for them, for their maintenance. They're having issues getting their money from Easy nine-one-one. So, they're requesting a separate contract year-to-year from us that we'll just pay them directly so that they don't have to fight with Resilient.
Resilient bills us for it. And what we have found out is we think that what they're billing, billing us, they're not giving all of that to West tail. They're, they're charging more than West tail charges. Um, so, we're kind of...
But they pay West tail, and they're paying West tail late.
They pay West, they pay West tail, but they charge us more than West tail charges them. So, they're making a little profit off of us.
And then they started their own telephone service.
Yes, they've started their own phone, um, plan, but it is not one that I'm interested in going with. West tail works for us, um, it's user-friendly, it works for the, our, both of our communities. I have a good working relationship with their IT and Mr. Clayton, so I'm not interested in going with, with Resilient phone, phone plan.
And I talked to the same gentleman she did, and I told him what West, what, um, Resilient was charging us for West tail, and it is more than they charge Resilient, so I did verify that they are overcharging. It's not a big amount, but it is overcharging.
So, we just need a motion to go with West tail, all right?
And leave, leave the middleman out.
So, I need a motion to go with West tail exclusively?
Yes.
Alright. Alright, need a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Alright. Departments?
I know Miss Debbie's got something she's going to talk to y'all about.
Oh, oh.
Just a reminder, we got May first, is our meeting for the NIM class that night, five thirty-six.
You're going to send a reminder out, correct?
I have registered all of y'all for the class, so y'all are registered.
And, uh, on our mobile command, I've got a price on the one that we originally wanted, four hundred fifty thousand.
How many, how much, Debbie?
Then they found us another one that was a little van type, and they wanted three twenty-five. So, we found a used SWAT vehicle, for twenty-six thousand.
Oh, that's better, I like this.
A hundred and sixty-something, I've got pictures of that, a hundred and sixty thousand mile, it was a prison transport van. We can strip it out, hopefully, and do generator in it, redo, I mean, probably, I have no idea, fifty, fifty thousand.
We would just need to see what it would cost to, to re-outfit it for a mobile command. Because I like the color of it, don't you, Debbie?
I know, we're going to hang it.
Let's wrap it, let's put a wrap on it. We could sell, like, frankenfuss board on the side, sponsorships on it.
We wanted to put windows in it, but the guy was not, he didn't think he could cut into it and put windows in it. So, it's got two doors. But he said he could strip it and put a generator in it, or some put lights and tires, because he does, he redoes all police vehicles and buses. He's in Santa Rosa, Louisiana. And he's going to hold it for us to go look at.
And this is twenty-six? This is, and how much you think, Doug? Paul, you, you got a budget? I mean, you go, I mean, like, yeah, it costs four hundred fifty thousand, isn't it?
We don't know anybody that strips and redoes them, but we, if you strip it out, we might, I mean, all we need then is some counter space and maybe some fabric, a couple of high chairs in it.
Right. It looks like it's in pretty good shape. Looks like it's in pretty good shape.
He said it was, he said it was well-maintained, it's a diesel, it's an F-550.
But we were going to go down there next week, week after next, yeah? And then just kind of look at it and see.
Well, for what the city's going to do, but I, I feel like them help pay for part of it. I don't know if it's going to be on that same percentage as the taxes, I have no idea, but I, I think they are willing to help out.
Right.
And I would say it would definitely be under a hundred to get all this done.
Yeah, I believe so.
Well, I'm better with this. So, do you want to go look at it, or do you want us to go ahead and make a motion? What do you want us, you want to go look at it?
I need to look at it first.
Go look at it first, okay. I understand, I, I understand, I understand, calm down over there.
Anyway.
Alright.
That's what I got.
Anything else, Doug?
Uh, just the fueling stations, pretty much, it's on car to be normal. Uh, haven't had any problems with it, and I don't know, Andy, you got anything? Sheriff, you got anything?
Anybody else, any question? I need a motion to adjourn, if not...
One, one more thing. Uh, we are having the meeting on the twentieth, March the twentieth, at six-thirty, it's going to be at Debbie's EOC building.
That's the joint meeting?
Joint meeting with the, the city. Uh, and we'll discuss FOST and a number of other things. We'll, we'll get the agenda out to y'all by then, but that's, it's going to be on the twentieth.
Got nothing else? Need a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aha, aha. Austin, you got it cut off yet?